Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Crystal. At this time, I'd like to call to order the council meeting. Let's start with roll call, please.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Idbo.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish is absent. Councilmember Kaiser is absent. Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, we have an agenda before us. Looking for a motion on that agenda, John?
So moved.
All right, looking for a second. Thanks, David.
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items that are routine and non-controversial in nature. I'll read those into the record at this time. First items are minutes for the following meetings. June 16th, 2024, for the work session, as well as the council meeting. August 1st, 2024, for our budget meeting. Second item is an approval license application submitted to the city by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. Approval donations of donation agreement with Robinsdale School District for receipt of a bus. Adoption of a resolution amending the city's approval for the tree list. Adoption of a resolution ordering preparation for the assessment rolls, declaring the amounts to be assessed, and setting up a public hearing for October 15th. And that's for the 2024 delinquent accounts. Last item is an adoption of a resolution approving the grant agreement with Hennepin County Youth Activities for Twin Oaks Park. Looking for a motion on that one. Go ahead, John.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
All right, Forrest.
Second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Benjamin Fugate?
Yes?
Would you like to speak during the public hearing, or would you like open forum?
That's fine, that's fine.
I mean, it seems to be related to LRT, isn't it?
Yes, correct.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'd like to move you to the public hearing. All right. Next is open forum. Just a clarification, what open forum is, it's an opportunity for anyone from the city to come and address the council. We like to hear from you. It is a public place where you can have the community hear your concerns. We do a lot, three minutes per person, 10 minutes per topic. And it's a really underutilized tool that I think the citizens should be aware of. Is there anybody wishing to speak during that that does not have anything to do with LRT?
I have a question and one statement I may, if I may.
Is it related to the LRT?
No, it's not, no, it's not.
Okay.
I would have said it if I had time.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and step forward? I would like you to state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Benjamin Fugate of 5602 57th Avenue North in Crystal, right by the airport. David knows me. We didn't do Night to Night this year, but so, but I was just wondering how crime is looking. I actually got a report not too long ago. Couple things, at 7600 somewhere, Bass Lake Road, it might be New Hope Side, but very close to here. I heard about theft there and also the Becker Park shutdown. I think there's been multiple shutdowns, just wondering what's going on with that, how that's going. And then I'm just was very concerned that hundreds of residents were asked to remove trees in this very expensive time period that we're in right now with high inflation, things like that. And I'm sure that that actually promoted inflation because I'm sure that the tree, those arborists, charged more because they knew the demand. I was, I ended up spending almost $2,000 removing a tree. So it's been quite expensive. I understand the concern, but I just, just wondering why that was done with just increased costs as they are right now.
Okay.
Did you get all that?
I got all that. So something I failed to mention, we won't be addressing these things on the fly like that, but we will definitely be talking about it. I'm going to ask some staff to reach out to you to answer some of your questions specifically. I think we have some things that probably will be addressed maybe even later in the council meeting. I'm not sure. Oftentimes, we get to announcements and we ask for some updates on the very things that you're looking for. So we've taken notes. Do you have proper people? And you can take that and we'll get to on your specific concerns.
That's fine, I'm sure.
All right. Anyone else wishing to bring anything up for the council or for themselves, however you want to look at it? Seeing nobody, we will be done with open forum. Next is the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive comment, council consideration regarding the municipal consent plans for the Blue Line extension. John Sutter, are you going to kick us off on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. And just for the members of the public, I know we already had one Zoom question about, will Zoom attendees be able to speak during the hearing? Yes. But first, I would like to go through the slideshow so to kind of ground everybody in what the project is in Crystal specifically and also what municipal consent is. And then, once the hearing is open, my suggestion would be for the mayor to first recognize people that are physically present, and then we would move on to those attending remotely. So we're here tonight for the municipal consent public hearing, and that will be followed by a city council discussion and a work session after the council meeting concludes tonight. So what is this proposed project? This is an extension of the Blue Line Light Rail Transit Facility. It currently runs from Target Field Station in Minneapolis to the Mall of America in Bloomington, including the stations at MSP Airport and places along the way. The extension would take that from Target Field Station, go the other way, out our way, through Robinsdale, Crystal, and Brooklyn Park, and it would end at Oak Grove Parkway just north of Highway 610. The extension would be 13.4 miles long and have 12 stations. Construction start is anticipated in 2027, with the line opening in 2030. So what about the Crystal segment? It's two miles long. The LRT tracks would run in the median of Botno Boulevard. And to do that, the project would remove the inside lanes in each direction of Botno Boulevard so that it would be reduced from six lanes to four. And that would create a wider median, which in turn creates space to put the LRT tracks. There would be an interchange at Bass Lake Road. That means Botno Boulevard through traffic would bridge up and over Bass Lake Road. There would be ramps connecting the two roads, and then a bike ped path that would pass under the Botno Boulevard bridges and ramps. The Bass Lake Road LRT station would be at grade, at ground level, in between the bridges. And there would be a park and ride lot on the west side of Botno Boulevard, just south of the telecommunications tower. So what is municipal consent? Well, state law provides three options for each city along the route. There's approval, which is where the city approves the plans that have been submitted to us by Metropolitan Council. The city could take no action, which by default becomes the same as approval. Or disapproval, in which the city must identify changes to the plans that would result in approval. Disapproval would trigger a hearing by Metropolitan Council, which means if the city disapproves, the city would have to make its case to the Metropolitan Council, which is the governing body of Metro Transit. And then they will decide whether or not to make the city's changes. And I want to emphasize this, especially for members of the public. There is no provision in that statute for a city to just say no to a light rail transit project. There's no such thing in the statute. What municipal consent is not about, it's not about LRT versus or compared to other forms of transportation. Municipal consent is not about the question of whether LRT is cost effective or operational issues related to LRT. Those are all valid questions and issues, but the City of Crystal has no authority to address them. That authority is with Metropolitan Council and Hennepin County. They are the decision makers on those bigger issues and questions. Under the state law, our focus has to be on the design plans that they have submitted to us, the city. So the next step is for me to walk through the segments from south to north so everyone is familiar with what the project would physically mean, what those plans are. And these are excerpts on the screen. These are excerpts from the design plans that were submitted to us by Metro Transit, Metropolitan Council at the end of July. So at, see if I can move this. So this is, again, left is south, north is to the right. This is Highway 100 in Robinsdale. This is the existing interchange. Yellow is proposed asphalt pavement. Red is proposed concrete, although it might be landscaped instead of concrete medians, things like that. Blue is the proposed LRT tracks. And then orange are new structures, new bridges. So the northbound third lane would drop, and that's the inside lane coming out of Robinsdale, would drop between the 100 ramps and 47th Avenue. On the southbound side over here, the configuration would be roughly the same as what's out there today. North of 47th Avenue up to Carvallos, again, the inside lanes would be removed to create space for LRT tracks in the median. They would, however, add back a third southbound lane as you approach 47th because of the vehicles queuing up to get on the 100 ramp. Important to note that this would shift the roadway curb further west than where it is today. Apart from that, though, in this segment, the proposed project generally fits within the existing road footprint. And that's, again, because of the elimination of one lane in each direction. That creates that space in the existing footprint. There would also be a traction power substation somewhere around here. Best guess, it would probably go on this vacant lot that sits right there. But traction power substation is, if you've been on the LRT routes, you may have seen them. They're kind of a small building that has all the transformers and other things that I don't know much about that operate the, help the LRT to operate since it is a fully electrified train. So going from Carvallos up and over the Canadian Pacific, Kansas City Railroad tracks, again, because the inside lanes are removed in each direction, that creates space to put the LRT tracks in the median. However, in this segment between Carvallos and Wilshire, one of the things that the project did in response to city concerns is that, in addition to two lanes in each direction, that there'd be eight-foot shoulders. And the reason that's so important here is because this bridge is the only way for our first responders to get to the northern third of the city when a two-mile-long, slow-moving eastbound freight train is on the CPKC blocking Douglas and Broadway, and maybe Winnetka, too. So this is a very important place for our, for us to be able to get to the northern third of our city for emergency response. The eight-foot shoulders is to provide a place for the vehicles to move over into during peak hours when both lanes are probably pretty full with traffic. Even with the shoulders and the LRT tracks in the middle, it generally fits within the existing road footprint. And you note, the project at this point is only planning to remove a couple of the existing spans. Most of the existing road bridge would remain, as well as the retaining walls on either side of the approaches to that bridge. And then from Wilshire Boulevard to Bass Lake Road, this is where the most significant changes would occur. Botno Boulevard through traffic, instead of being an at-grade intersection, which by the way is currently the busiest single at-grade intersection on the route. Instead of being an at-grade intersection, the project would turn it into an interchange. The through traffic, the two through lanes of Botno would pass over Bass Lake Road on bridges. In between them, staying down at grade would be the LRT tracks with the station platform, which is this pink color here. The north end of the platform would be accessed from the sidewalk that runs on Bass Lake Road. The south end of the platform would be accessed from a pedestrian bike path that would go under not only the Botno bridges, but also the ramps so that the only thing pedestrians, bicyclists, and others rolling would need to cross here would be the LRT tracks themselves. They would not have to cross any roads to get from one side of Botno to the other. There would be a park and ride space, a lot, I don't remember exactly how many spaces. I think it's low, just over 100, maybe, 120, something like that, in this area. And also another traction power substation would be located somewhere in this area, on the west side of Botno, just south of the cell tower. Also, in this area would be two of the three total acquisitions anticipated for the Crystal project, and they would be here, the Schrader Office Building and the U-Haul, both of which would be necessary to build the park and ride. So looking at Bass Lake Road just east to west, the most significant thing, and this is the only access change in the entire Crystal segment, is that the left turns from southbound Elmhurst to eastbound Botno would be prohibited, physically eliminated by the changes to the median. You'd still be able to turn left to go get onto Elmhurst from eastbound Bass Lake Road, but you would not be able to exit to eastbound Bass Lake Road from Elmhurst. Instead, the traffic would have to turn right and then make a U-turn at Sherburne Avenue, and then go back east. This pedestrian crossing and upgraded bus stop was, were items that were in the 2016 Station Area Plan that came out of many community meetings about trying to make changes occur on Bass Lake Road. And also, they were in the previous design of the project when it was going to run on the rail corridor. So this is basically a continuation of what's been in previous plans. Going east of Botno, you'll note that left turn lanes have been added for both eastbound Bass Lake Road to turn north on Zane or westbound Bass Lake Road to turn south on Adair, which helps for traffic safety and flow. And then the shared bike paths on either side of Bass Lake Road would have transitions to a combination of bike lanes on the road and sidewalks off the road. And for the, on the north side of Bass Lake Road, that transition would happen at Adair. And on the south side, it would happen at Yates. From Bass Lake Road north to 58th Avenue, the airport road access would remain essentially the same as it is today. Some minor tweaks for traffic safety reasons. And you'll note that northbound on-ramp does have a brief auxiliary lane, merge lane, whatever you want to call it, that would then terminate at the Airport Road exit. But the, this is very similar to what's out there today at Airport Road. North of the interchange, it basically fits in the existing road footprint. Again, due to the lane reduction, that creates that space. The third of the three total acquisitions would be in this area. This would be the city's auto used car dealership here at 5630 Lakeland. And finally, it's not on this illustration, but the project is working on exploring a possibility, they have some engineering stuff to figure out, of maybe moving the Crystal Lake Regional Trail instead of rebuilding it right along the highway, moving it here so it would be on the baggage road, between the baggage road and the various commercial businesses that are along here. There are a lot of advantages, reasons to do that, but there are also some physical engineering challenges to work out. And they are working on those as we speak, but they did not have that option sort of figured out and fully vetted in time for the municipal consent plans. So not on the plans tonight, but something you should expect to see in the future if they're able to figure out how to make it work. And then the final Crystal segment, from 58th Avenue up through the Brooklyn Park border at 62nd. This one's very straightforward. It fits within the existing road footprint. Median is wider because of the lane reduction. Outside edges of the road are basically where they are today. And there would be a traction power substation probably on the west side of the BNSF corridor in this unused 60th Avenue right-of-way. That is basically the same spot that it would have been in in the previous version of the project. And so the landscaping and buffering and all that stuff has kind of already been figured out if the project decides to put it there. But that would be the third of the three traction power substations that would be in Crystal. So I think I will stop there, Mr. Mayor, and see if the council has any questions on the design plans before I get into the municipal consent issues that we've talked about in the past and what the next steps are.
All right, council. Forrest?
On the U-turn from Elmhurst, I know we had discussed trying to have the, the actual U-turn, you know, that man, where you'd have to U-turn at that intersection. Take a look at any engineering changes that could happen there to make that U-turn safer and, you know, better, since that's going to be the only way for people coming from Elmhurst to get on eastbound Bass Lake Road. Did that, was there any discussions about that?
It's, yes. It's, we've talked about, well, not, not with the project about that yet, but we, it is on the next slide about municipal consent. It's one of the five municipal consent items that we're, want to talk with you about bringing to the project as requirements for them to, to address that as part of the design changes.
Jump the gun, sorry.
No, it's a very good question because you all talked about it before. So, but yes, it's one of the five items that we will talk about during the work session about whether you want to include that in the municipal consent.
Go ahead, please.
Sorry.
You're good.
The, and then, so right now, you know, we have just kind of the site plans. Are elevations part of our considerations as well? I mean, I'd be, I just was curious, I hadn't realized, the trail connection on the south end of the, the station there. I was just, I don't really remember what the elevation of that looked like. Do you, do we have that?
I have it in a 150-megabyte file I have opened, but I'm not currently sharing. So if I could ask us to reserve that for the work session?
Okay.
That is another good question. I think your concern about maybe head clearance under the ramp.
Yeah, I was just, is it, is like a, I just want to know what it looks like, what the elevations are.
And I think, I know we have the profiles of the road. I don't know if we have elevations. There are illustrations. I'll see what we can find for the work session.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. Anyone else? No one else? Go ahead, John.
And then also, going from County Road 81 on to Highway 100, you know, having the middle lane as a choice lane? Is that, is there any traction on that at all?
That's one of our five proposed potential municipal consent items.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Good deal.
And there's the segue. So, so these are the five items that we have previously identified in discussions with the council, discussions with staff, some discussion with Robinsdale because they tie into Robinsdale's segment. One that's, we believe, critical infrastructure is that the LRT tracks in Robinsdale at 42nd Avenue be elevated over 42nd Avenue instead of at grade at 42nd Avenue. It's this illustration here. To protect the Joint Water Commission Supply Main, which runs from Minneapolis to Crystal down 42nd Avenue. It, it supplies roughly 80,000 people, 70,000 people? I think 70,000 people in Crystal, New Hope, and Bowden Valley.
Yes.
So it's a very important water supply, and not having the LRT tracks running over it is a critical issue for us. Another critical issue for the city that has been talked about many times with the project and here with, with the council and city staff is that this old rural section of West Broadway, this is Item B, that runs at least the old section from Highway 100 in Robinsdale to Fairview Avenue in Crystal, which has never been brought up by the county to urban, modern urban standards. There's no, no continuous sidewalk or bike path, curb and gutter, storm sewer. It's basically the same old rural road it was 80 years ago. That that needs to be put into the project plans, just like the project is done for a section of West Broadway in Minneapolis, where there's no LRT tracks on it. It's parallel and adjacent to a different road that has the LRT on it. And we think that this segment of West Broadway in Crystal and Robinsdale deserves the same consideration that Minneapolis has received. Item C, is that choice lane? Now, unfortunately, the, some of the illustrations go the other way. So in this version, south, it's like the Robinsdale one here. South is to the right, not the left. But can't really zoom in here, but basically the idea is, anyone who's driven south on Botno knows that there's only one of the three lanes that goes to 100 to go south on 100. But if you look at the traffic data, which I think most people don't know, but you probably sensed it as a driver in that area, you know, about half the traffic is going on 100. So right now, the backup, that queuing problem, is largely because half the traffic is being pushed into one, one-third of the lanes. So one solution to that, that we have asked for in the past, is that that middle lane on southbound Botno become a choice lane. So that middle lane could choose whether to stay on Botno or go south on 100. So half the traffic would be able to go into effectively half the lanes. And that would help with that throughput to southbound 100. Item D is, this has to do with maintenance and snow storage. You can see that frontage road segment right in front of Maxit Pond. And there's basically no snow, no snow storage in there. There's the shared trail or sidewalk here, a 20, I think it's a 26-foot-wide, two-lane, no parking road. So it's not a particularly wide road. And then there's a concrete, a narrow concrete median before what's left of the Maxit Pond parking lot. And we're not as concerned about snow storage over here near the park and ride because there's more room there, nor here because there's some boulevard space. But there is a real operational question for us with this design. This is a city street. Where does that snow go? I mean, we can't push it into the Maxit Pond parking lot. We can't push it onto the trail without coming back and making a special trip to haul it away or something. We don't even know what that would look like. So the, the ask is that they have to provide boulevards for that segment, however they do it. Or has to be boulevards on both sides of Lakeland in that vicinity. And then this goes to Councilmember Idbo's question about the Bass Lake Road median. This is an aerial photo, the existing condition. See how the median tapers down? It's a pretty tight U-turn here. If anyone's tried to make that, I know I have. It is, it is not easy unless you have a small car. So we would at least want the project to explore, the median is much wider further east here. Somehow making that median wider and maybe doing that taper over here or something. We don't know exactly what that looks like engineering-wise, but there needs to be something done here to make that U-turn, which the project is now forcing drivers to do if they're trying to go east on Bass Lake Road from Elmhurst, is to be able to make that U-turn a little more practical for your, most vehicles. Yes, a vehicle can maybe make this if it's a small vehicle and they're just optimally turning, but we know most drivers don't know how to optimally turn. I, no, I sure don't. And so that, that is what, excuse me, what that municipal consent issue is about. So those are the five that we've identified. Before I move on, are there any council questions or comments on these, Mr. Mayor?
Tajee?
And I think, just to provide context, these have been identified for quite some time. We have put these forward and asked for partnership and collaboration and maybe haven't received the partnership that we have hoped for. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, except for Items D and E. D has been talked about at a staff level. E, we haven't brought up yet because we wanted to go through this discussion. But A, B, and C, absolutely. We've been talking about some of the B and C especially. But even A, we've been talking about our concerns of the project team for quite a bit, for like well over a year on B and C, two years, actually.
Go ahead, Forrest.
On Issue A, the Joint Water Commission main, you know, that one, I think we've discussed less here in depth. And I was just wondering, is that issue related more towards disturbance during construction or maintenance long-term, or both?
Both.
Okay. And then my other question is, it's not, you said you discussed this with, you know, your counterparts at the county and Metro Transit. Have any water mains of this size been crossed in other, the other light rail projects, do you know?
I don't know. It's quite possible, given where those lines have run, but I do not know how those were dealt with.
Okay. Okay. I would just be curious if there were construction issues there, or?
Just when, we actually just, the JABC approved a letter to provide for Robbinsdale at the meeting this week, I'm sorry, last week, and one of the issues is that we did have an issue with that main several years ago, and there was a 75 by 75-foot pit that we had to, you know, excavate to access it. So, it's not just the protection, but access to it is, is a significant part, so whether that's additional valves that need to be put in, there's other considerations that are obviously important, critical for all the parties.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we had, we had two repairs in that, real close to that space, all within the last 10 years, I believe.
That's it, thank you.
Anyone else? John?
So, next steps, tonight, as soon as I'm done with my presentation, I almost am, then the, the city council should receive public comment on, again, on municipal consent, the, that's what this, the public hearing is for, and then after tonight's council meeting, there'll be a council work session here to discuss the potential municipal consent actions, including the ones that I just had on the screen, and anything that came out of the public hearing, public comments on design changes they'd like to see, this is the time to talk about changes to ask the project to make, that's what municipal consent is about. And then, we anticipate that on September 3rd, city staff present to the council one or more versions of a draft municipal consent resolution for further discussion. We have a backup date for that on September 12th, at that work session if needed, and then, the anticipated date for a city council vote on a municipal consent resolution would be September 17th, that's four weeks from today. If the council isn't able to reach a majority on that, to take a vote, then October 1st is our backup meeting, and the statutory deadline to finish this process is October 10th. So, that's what we have coming up. And with that, I will ask, do you have any questions for the council? Otherwise, it would be appropriate for the mayor to open the public hearing.
Yeah, go ahead, Forrest.
I'm, sorry, I have so many questions all the time, but on the, one of the, one of the items that we had talked about in the past, and I believe last time we talked about it, the question was, it hadn't quite been decided, the beacon on the pedestrian crossing for Bass Lake, has that been finalized, what type of beacon that will be?
No, and the answer, so, I'm, I'm trying to think through where we last left that. The, you know, there's a hawk signal, which is the, the more in-your-face kind of beacon for drivers, and then there's the rectangular flashing beacon, like we have at Douglas and 32nd, and 36th and Welcome. And I, I believe we're not far enough in the design plans to know what exactly they would put there.
Okay.
But in RRFB, that's the Douglas 32nd, Welcome 36 type, is, I would say, guess more likely than a hawk signal, but we have not gotten to that level of deliberations with the project team yet. And I think, I think we did bring it up, that question to them in our, in staff municipal consent comments, and I don't think we got a response yet, so.
Okay.
It's something that will be resolved as we progress with the design.
Okay. I, I would say, for me personally, that's a pretty big issue, I, I don't believe that a style similar to what we have down on Douglas would be adequate there, just based off the volumes and speeds and the number of conflict points there, it's pretty intense.
Mr. Mayor, that, that's an excellent example of the kind of thing during the work session, no, no fault for bringing it up now.
Yeah, sorry.
I just mean, like, that's exactly why we're having this whole process, is so that later tonight, you can tell us, what, what did we miss, right? What did staff not, what did staff need to add as municipal consent items that it wants in the plans? So, this is, this is the time, so that's a perfect example of the kind of stuff you should all be thinking about tonight.
So, not right now is the time, but soon is the time.
All right. All right, next, I'm going to open the public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is to receive comment in council consideration regarding the municipal consent plan for the blue line extension. We've heard from John, he's addressed the council, the council's had some questions. At this time, the public hearing is open, and, and we'll be soliciting people who wish to speak to the council, so, we don't have paper, so, we're going, we're going to invite people one at a time. I'll call on you if you have your hand on, let's do it that way. Anybody wishing to speak in the public hearing? All right, could you step forward? Do us a favor, state your name, give us your address, please.
My name is Amberger, I live at 4825 Vera Cruz, the apartment's right behind Steve's, and I do not think that we should be doing this blue line down 81. First of all, originally, this blue line was supposed to be running in 2021 in the, on the BNS corridor. Second of all, I've lived, I grew up in a house two blocks from where I currently live, next block over from John, and we waited 40 years for them to widen 81, back when it was Highway 52. And at one point, they were going to put a clover leaf over by Kavanaugh, and back in the late 60s, they tore out all kinds of houses on both sides of 81. And all that property stood vacant for 40 years because nothing got built. The city lost all the tax base in that time, and then in 2010, 2011, they started rebuilding all the, those houses, of the houses they tore out. And now, you want to tear up 81 again and lessen the lanes of traffic and put a light rail down there, that is, that's stupid. And we've waited years for all this stuff, and nothing's happened, and to start tearing up 81 again, no.
All right, thank you, Ann.
Yep.
Did you want to come, go next? Guy in the purple shirt, back row?
Even for beauty?
It was both of you.
Well, I, I would second Ann's comments about 81, I think I asked, I can't remember who I sent it to, but I think it was the DOT.
Start with your name.
Oh, sorry, I, I'm sorry, I spoke earlier, Ben Fugate, 5602 57th Avenue North, in Crystal. I think I, I think I, a long time ago, I emailed, I think it was the DOT, and said, why did you widen this 81? Aren't you just going to put the light rail through? And the response back, and I don't know who it was, I have to go find it some point, was, no, we're never going to do that, we're never going to take the lanes away, even if we put the light rail through, we aren't going to take the lanes away. Well, then, now they are. And I would second that, and I understand the BNSF issues, and I understand the railroad has, is like an empire, and I understand that they probably have much say in that, and they, that they are not going to give in, I get that part, but if you look at like SWLRT, they're not doing that, they're not going down Excelsior, or Minnetonka, or Lake Street, or any of those, Minnetonka, 7, they're not even taking away 7, which is a similar type of highway. So, I think, I think the suggestion needs to be, can you find another route, please? Either that, either above grade, or something else, please find another route, because no other highway is being affected like this with other, other light rails that I know of, if, if somebody knows of one, go ahead, let me know, I know Manyha Ha is a little bit like, or Manyha in Hiawatha, but, so, I think that's one of the main concerns, the other main concern, when I've used public transit, twice now, twice when I've used it, I've had to report crimes of people being, not like violent crimes, but people on the bus being a problem and having to be removed, I think both of them under the influence of something. So, I would rather not have those kind of people, whatever creed they are, being in this area, or being, or being bused to this area, or being, being brought to this area, should I say. And I think the other thing is, the, the Bass Lake Road is, is really concerning to me, because I live right by it, I'm not really sure I'm going to get to work. I go to Plymouth for work, not going to use light rail because it's Plymouth, so, not really sure what I'm going to do, all the options don't look great. I did have a question, but if, if you can't answer it now, that's fine, maybe this is for your work project. I thought that originally, the, I don't know, John, if you have the, the one, the Bass Lake Road, oh, not the Bass Lake Road, the Bass Lake Road to 58th picture, I thought originally, the airport road would not have access back to Botno. Has that been changed from previous?
Yep. I can answer that, if you like, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that, that's an easy one to answer, so, originally, it was going to be like you saw in the drawings tonight, and then for a brief period of time, they were trying to modify it so that the airport road access would be taken away, and the only option there would be to turn off 81 onto the frontage road near Thunderbird Aviation.
Yep.
The project has now gone back to what they had a year ago, or two years ago.
So, it's basically the same access as it is now?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I think the main concern I have with the Bass Lake Road is that the railroad is so close to 81, that to build anything, unless you're going to build over the, unless you, you can't build Bass Lake Road over the railroad, because you're not, it's that great, so you're, you're looking at, especially if there's a school bus, a metro transit-type vehicle stopping, especially in that right lane, you, you could be backing up half a mile back towards like Adair Zane, just people waiting there, you've got that light takes, that light is like five seconds, I mean, it's ridiculous. I've had it with third or fourth car, if I'm the third or fourth car, I might not even get through, or if I do, I'm going on yellow. And, and now, I, I get, yes, there's no 81 there, I get that part, but now you have, what, two lights, is that, am I, am I understanding that, or is it one light? I don't know, sure, but, point is, it's just, it's going to, it's just not going to be pretty, any prettier than it is now. So, those are my main concerns. My understanding is, it's best to probably go to county council to ask them to stop the project altogether, I get that part, but just as far as the city, I think, I feel like the city should say, can we have another route? Can there be another route, starting from wherever it's starting, Target Field, can, is there another route available? Because as far as I know, except maybe Hiawatha, 55, southwest Minneapolis, no other highway is being treated like this with light rail, so, that's my thoughts.
All right. Thanks, Ben. All right, go ahead.
Other purple shirt?
Hello? My name is Robert Coleman, I don't live in Crystal, I'm sorry, but what I am here to say is that I think that this project is a really good opportunity for people who don't live in Crystal and are able to take the light rail or take other good transit options to the city of Crystal. When it comes to, like, how I could get here, there's very, it is, it takes a long time to get here, oftentimes, travel times by transit are like two to five times as long as by car, and in terms of, there are so many opportunities of like, businesses that I've seen in Robbinsdale or in Crystal, I'm like, hey, I would love to go there, except it takes over two hours to get from where I live. And I think that in terms of the opportunities that this project will give, there have been studies that show that having high-quality transit increases the amount of economic mobility for people who live nearby it. People are able to more easily get to high-quality jobs at a cheaper, in a cheaper way that allows them to have more social mobility, more economic mobility, to allow them to, you know, go, become, enter the middle class, or to have a better standard of life for themselves. And when you look at the, the supplemental draft environmental, thing, the, the environmental effects, they go through a lot, whole bunch of them, you know, floodwaters, and soil quality, and potential contamination, but really, in terms of the whole project, most of them are very minor, and only really for the construction, but in terms of the ones that are real, or like the sound, but that's mostly in Minneapolis, in terms of the effects in Crystal, it is four single-family homes and one multifamily how, dwelling that has 14 units. And it feels like the, the very, in terms of, there's also like the traffic, where it shows in there that the, it will overall have a positive effect, it will decrease traffic, it will make it easier for cars traveling on, for example, on Botno at Bass Lake Road to go straight without having to stop at the light. I think that in general, all of the, the potential benefits outweigh the negatives, and in terms of the municipal consent, I don't think that delaying it further, you know, requesting a moratorium is at all appropriate, in terms of what, how long that the Twin Cities has waited for, and how other cities have been waiting for these kinds of improvements, and now, there's this great opportunity to have all of this, have a really good project in Crystal, and I think that I, in terms of the, I was talking with my friend back there, and we had some trouble figuring out what C was, but I think we originally, we eventually figured it out, but A, I think that maybe leave that one, if you were to do that one, leave it more open-ended, so that maybe if there was another solution that could be found that isn't elevating the light rail tracks over the water main, maybe if they can find out some other creative solution to have that maintenance not be as burdensome, then, you know, leave it a little bit more open-ended so that more creative solutions could come in without having to elevate the light rail over that intersection.
All right, thanks, Robert. Anyone else? Yep.
Good evening, Heidi Schmidt, 5038 Quail Avenue North, Crystal. I just have some more questions, I had some questions when I came in, but I got more since John went through the slide deck. First off, how does the expanded shoulder help with the left turns for emergency vehicles? I live in the Kavanaugh Oaks area, and when the light rail goes off, it's going to essentially make our community a dead end for everything, because the light rail's going to go right down there. As you know, Fire Department and all that is on the west side of Botno, we live on the east, and, left turn, you got to come over that light rail to get into our neighborhood, and I don't understand how the expanded shoulders will help with that, so I'd like to know that. I'd also like to know what kind of studies have been done, is you're considering, hopefully, a disapproval of the system, what that looks like in terms of expanded emergency response times into that neighborhood. As you know, several years ago, the council approved the 55-plus community in that neighborhood, I have sirens all day long and emergency vehicles coming into that complex, and I think this is going to continue to harm, or to add harm to those residents, because they won't be able to get the quick response that they do today, because they will have to wait, wait for the light rail. As we know, the light rail has a priority over emergency vehicles, it does not stop, if you look at the statutes, it does. In addition, the traffic pattern on two lanes versus three, I go to work, I leave that neighborhood, I take a left-hand turn onto Botno, so I can get onto Highway 100, there are, somebody mentioned cars, I wait three cars, if I'm the fourth car waiting for that light, I have to wait for another light. And now, if I'm going to have a train, that's going to delay my travel, as well as others coming in and out of that neighborhood to take those left-hand turns. COVID's happened, it's a real thing, traffic has changed. People do not go downtown, if you look at restaurants that are closing, businesses that are closing, Target no longer has employees that are required to be in that building. This plan was made when traffic patterns were pre-COVID, and so, I think, as you look at, hopefully, disapproving, and think about what are your problems, or what are your solutions going to be as a recommendation, I would recommend that the council goes back and re-look at track, current traffic patterns, and make their new recommendation based upon that as we move forward. The other thing is, you know, my council member told me that there's not a thing we can do about it, and so, my question is, if it's going to go through, what is the no, no's, noise mediation? So, if you think about Kavanaugh Oaks, there are single-family homes right along Botno, is there going to be something for noise mediation put in place? I didn't hear any of that on the plans or any of the recommended, so that would be one thing that I would like to consider. And then, have you guys explored, and I know that you're working on a working session, but like, are there other things that you might like feedback from on terms of ideas, or what you have explored already in terms of other opportunities? I don't think Botno's the right thing, I do think the rail that's already there could be another option to explore, going back to BNS and considering that. And then, the last one that I have in my notes is, why in the world are we keeping the stations open, like, why don't we have enclosed stations? I have been going, you know, I used to live in Eagan, and so, we would occasionally take the rail and we stopped, we've lived now in Crystal for 11 years, and the, the crime that we would see with those open stations was really bad, and so, we stopped taking it, and I don't really want to see that happen in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. Anyone else wishing to speak? John? Oh, we have one online?
Yes, sir, if we're all done in the room.
Yep, I will circle back in the room, but let's go ahead and hit that one now.
Okay. Mr. Winter, I believe you asked to speak?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Name and address for the record?
Cannot hear.
Sure, oh, cannot, you cannot hear me?
We can barely, very faint. Is that our side or his side?
Mr. Winter, can you increase your microphone volume? Mr. Winter, can you increase your microphone volume?
I don't believe so, so I'm doing my best.
We can hear you now, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, cool. Hello, my name is Jeremy Winter. I also do not live in Crystal, alas, although I came over to your lovely town today. Funnily enough, I live right by the 14 bus, so I actually already have a direct line to, to your town. I ate at Milton tonight, it was a really wonderful restaurant. You know, I live not too far from the Blue Line. And the Blue Line is just a really wonderful thing in my life. It's, I don't have to deal with all the traffic on Hiawatha Avenue, which is really nice. You know, I own an electric bike, an e-bike, and you know, buses can't really accommodate e-bikes, whereas the light rail can because it's much more open. It's, it's very easy and accessible. You know, I, I, I come from the suburbs too, not suburbs here. I come from New Jersey, New Jersey suburbs. But I had a, a train line back home to, to New York City. And it really was just such a staple and like pivotal thing in my life, you know? Having that rail connection. It's just a wonderful thing. And I would really love, you know, to hopefully be able to come up to Crystal and enjoy more nice dinners easier because the 14 bus goes very, very, very slowly. But, but the light rail would be a wonderful, wonderful solution to that. And I would love to, you know, see y'all folks come over here too. I, I feel like there's a lot of acrimony and negativity around this project. And, you know, I just, I think there's so much potential for wonderful, positive things here. And just so, just so much opportunities connecting the, the Twin Cities metro that it brings me a lot of, a lot of joy. Yeah, and you know, I, I think y'all will find that once, once it's in place, you know, you'll find that more people won't, you won't have to deal with as much traffic because people will be able to take the light rail to downtown instead of having to drive along the street. And you'll have super easy, convenient access to all the bars in, in the north loop. And you won't have to worry about driving home intoxicated because there's a train now. There's just, there's just so many issues that you, so many wonderful things that I, I think will come of this. And I really hope to see it go through. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeremy. Do we have anybody else online?
Let me check the chat, Mr. Mayor. Only Mr. Winter. Let me see if I can get this down. Nobody else has asked to speak?
Last call in the room, anybody wishing to speak? All right. Oh, we got one.
Hello? Do I have to speak?
Yeah, just bend the microphone towards you. Don't be afraid to speak into it.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Name for the record, my name is Katie Heagle. And although I currently rent in Hopkins, less than a mile from the southwest LRT, I have purchased property in Crystal. And that property is located at 4545 Hampshire Avenue North. My only comment for the council is that I support efficient, safe and accessible public transit. I'm very excited about the opportunities that LRT provides, including in Hopkins, Crystal and elsewhere. I do want to echo the consideration when it comes to fair enforcement and other safety measures. I would love to see a consideration of turnstiles being added or enclosure or other fair enforcement measures. I think this would be a positive for everyone. And I really want to see this project succeed. I want to see people using it. I want to have the kinds of experiences that I had growing up outside of Chicago. We never drove into Chicago. We always took the train as a family. It was safe. And when I spent a semester abroad in Dublin, I took the train many times per week. It was always a safe and efficient and enjoyable experience. I want to see that happen here. So, looking forward to what this project brings and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Katie. All right. Anyone else? All right. This time I'd like to close the public hearing. Council action, what are we doing here? So we'll continue the discussion for the municipal consent. Looking for a motion to continue that conversation.
Mr. Mayor?
What am I?
Sorry to interrupt. I don't think any motion is necessary. You closed the public hearing and that was all that action was?
All right, so just a, just a continuation.
Okay.
Cool, thank you.
Excuse me.
Yeah, that should have been removed. All right, for our regular agenda, we'll consider dispersments of $25,000 or greater. I will read those into the record at this time. And first item for 25, expenditures, $25,000 or greater. First one is for the Met Council. Wastewater Services for August, $143,220. Waste Management for New Hope Brooklyn Center and Crystal June Recycling for $75,067. Weber Recreational Design for Pool Improvements, $334,112. West Metro Fire Rescue District for June, July and August Contributions to West Metro Fire is $408,654. Jenny's Journeys for the senior trip is $37,110. Logist for IT Services is $198,608. Municipal Builders Inc. for Pump House Project, $96,487. Nix Tree Service Inc. for the ashtray and stump removal, $70,345. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for June Water Expenses or Charges, I should say, $191,081. Northwest Asphalt Inc. for the 2024 Utility Reconstruction, $113,565. SEH Inc. for the same thing, Reconstruction Utilities, $43,813. Kevitt Excavation LLC for Pool Excavation, $120,536. Boys Contracting LLC for Joint Wash, Joint Water Commission Valve, $51,519. Core and Main LP for Census Radio Upgrade Project, $80,190. North Country Chevrolet for the New Streets Department Truck, $44,956. IRS Electronic Payments, federal and FICA withholding for payday, or for taxes for, yeah, Paydate 7/5/24, $71,956. Same for the taxes for Paydate 7/19/24, $73,902. And the same for Paydate 8/2/24, $72,439. Men Para for the Employee City Required Contributions for Paydate 7/19/24, $71,841. For the same thing for Paydate 8/2/24, $73,552. For US Bank for Debt Service Payment, $99,200. Health Partners Inc. for August Health Insurance Premiums, $141,913. Total dispersment of $25,000 or greater is $2,614,073 and 28 cents. Are there any questions from the council? That was a long one.
Because we haven't.
Yeah, go ahead, Tajee.
What is this Jeannie's Journeys?
That's for seniors, that's being run through the Parks and Rec. So it's a recreation program. There's a senior, senior citizens have a travel trip. The Jeannie's, Jenny's, sorry, the Travel AC, Jenny's Journeys, Jenny, Jeannie's Journeys, that we, they bill us. And so the, it's all reimbursed by, paid for by the travelers. We're basically a conduit for the fund, but we issued the check, which is why it has to go through.
Did you think we were sending the Cooper seniors somewhere?
It's okay. I had that thought my first time.
Okay, reimbursement.
I had, I had to ask the same thing.
It's okay. We all did it.
Yeah, go ahead. Since we're talking about it, where are they going?
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows?
Councilmember, I don't recall. No, there's a variety, there's a variety of trips throughout the year and you sign up. And then we do get a small amount of that, that we keep for coordinating the trips.
Okay.
But, yeah, there's a variety, they're great trips and.
I've seen them in the newsletter.
They're very popular.
So this isn't just one trip, it's like for the whole year?
I'm not sure exactly what this, if it's for one, because they're period, they're not like a bunch at a time.
Right, there's like.
They're like every couple of months, there's another trip.
Few. This is the only invoice that we've received this year. All right. Stumped ya. We're expecting Jeannie's Journey. Any other questions on any of these other items? Seeing none, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve expenditures over $25,000.
All right, looking for a second. John?
So moved.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay? Motion carries. All right. Second item are, is in reference to the JPA Agreement for Pups, which is Pets Under Police Security. Deputy Chief Hubbard is here to address the council on this item. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So every, we just got done with the Olympics. And when you watched a relay, the relay goes well when the handoff actually happens without fumbling around at all. The relay on this fumbled just a little bit. So the narrative that you have in your memo is a little different than what's the case. Your memo says that there was an addition of a city. That actually is not the case. We added a city last year when you approved it. The change in the JPA is some operational verbiage based on Pups', Pups has been having some issues with some other cities, not our city, and the length of time and the condition of how some of the animals have arrived at Pups. And the way the JPA was worded, the pup staff were having some difficulty either doing something with those animals or getting kind of more immediate care when they needed it. So the verbiage, basically the change allows for the pup staff to seek care a little bit more easier than they had previously. So that's actually the change. All of the rest of the verbiage in the agreement is the same. The financial conditions and terms are the same as what was previously approved. Just that change operationally. So my apologies for in the chief's transition, me not explaining it correctly and slipping the baton in her hand as she was fumbling. So that's the gist of the change to the JPA.
All right. John, go ahead.
I see that Maple Grove has a termination clause in this. And they're like the only one that has a termination clause in this, in this agreement?
Yeah, so the way Pups has been set up since its inception is that Maple Grove actually operates the Pups facility. So they employ the staff. It is in a Maple Grove owned facility. And so the way it's written, any of the member agencies can get out of that arrangement by, basically with a six month clause. But Maple Grove has the ability basically to close and terminate this as it stands if they chose to because they're doing it, everybody else would then have to figure out what they do. Which that's been the verbiage that's been longstanding, I believe, since the inception of the arrangement.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Chief? Seeing none. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, looking for a motion. John?
I'll make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement with Pets Under Police Security.
All right, looking for a second. Go ahead, David.
Um, I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay? Motion carries. Next, our city planner, Dan Olson, is here to address the council. And he's going to talk about a first reading of a rezoning for 6203 and 6213, 36th Avenue. Welcome, Dan.
Yes, thank you again. So this item tonight is, is our item 6.3 and 6.4 on your agenda. They're both, both items are relating to the same development. The first is a rezoning to PD for this project, residential project. And then the second is a lot consolidation plat for this development. So here, showing by the arrow are the two lots that are involved in this development. This shows the area that we notified the, the resident, the property owners around, around these two properties. We also went through all these various ways to alert them of, of this public hearing that the planning commission held and, and where they, how they can comment. So here is a recent aerial photo showing, it's a little hard to see the property. It's a, there is a house in there. It's a single family home that's existing, right there. And that's the only building, there's, there's a garage and then there's a, an outbuilding for the, that are all related to that single family home. So a little bit of an introduction, Creech, Creek Edge Townhomes LLC owns the properties on 6203 and 6213, 36th. And they are proposing to construct four twin homes for a total of eight units on the property, accessed from one driveway off of 36th Avenue. Creek Edge is proposing to request, is requesting to rezone the property from single family R1 to planned development. The underlying zoning would be medium density residential. And the applicant proposes also to consolidate the two lots into one, which is an action that only the city council takes. And the planning commission did not see that, according to our UDC. So that's, they just looked at the rezoning. The property is designated as medium density residential in our 2040 comprehensive plan, which is six to six unit, six to 16 units per acre. The proposed density for this project is the least, it's six units per acre for this prop, for this project. That property, this property has been guided medium density residential since the 2000, or since 2000 for the 2020 comprehensive plan. So it's been almost 25 years that it's been designated, designated this way. Here is the site plan for the development. You can see the, the eight units, two, four twin homes accessed off that one driveway off of 36th Avenue. They are also proposing to have a, a storage building on the south part of the, of the development. I'll get to, I'll speak about that in a little bit. And then just west of the driveway will be some visitor parking, six spaces, and then also two stormwater ponds in that whole west area. So a description of the twin homes. First question is, are they going to be owned or rented? At this point, the applicant is saying they're, they're going to be rentals. But in the future, he may submit a, what's called a common interest community plat or condo plat to be able to sell each of these units to owner occupied, or owner occupants. That's a process that currently they have to go through, planning commission, city council to do. But they, that would be something that would be available to him. The building height here is two stories or 27 feet to the roof peak. The size of each unit, it's 739 square feet on the main floor and then 1,100 on the upper floor for a total of 1,900 square feet per unit. Each unit would have three bedrooms and two and a half baths with an attached garage of about approximately 400 square feet. There will, there will be no basements on these units either. And they will each have, each have a rear patio. So here is the elevations on this slide and next slide. The west elevation is, that's what's going to be, you would see if you're, if you're driving into that main driveway off of 36th. And then below that is the, the elevation from the east side of the property, so toward the single family area. The proposed major exterior building material is engineered wood siding with manufactured stone as an accent material. Here are the other two elevations, the, the north facing 36th and then the south, which is facing another townhome development to the south. The floor plan for these is shown here. You can see, I went through this already. You can see on the main floor, there's the living room, dining room, kitchen and mudroom. And then on the upper for each unit would be the, the bedrooms, laundry and then the bathrooms. Notable site elements, the PD zoning allows for customized site development standards. So the applicant is requesting two, what I would call site variations. First, this would, this PD zoning would allow for more than one principal building on the one consolidated property. And then secondly, the north setback would be reduced from 30 feet, which would, which is under the R, or the, which would be required under the, for an R2 dwelling in the R1 district or R2 district, from, to 30 feet, to 20 feet, I'm sorry. So this table here compares requirements under the, are the, the current R1 district for a two family dwelling with the proposed requirements for a PD rezoning for the same type of building type. So this table here compares requirements under the, are the, the current R1 district for a two family dwelling with the proposed requirements for a PD rezoning for the same type of, building type. You can see that the, I'll, I'll get to this when I get to the consolidated, the lot consolidation, but it, the lot area, lot depth and lot width will, will more than exceed what is required under, with the PD and the lot consolidation. As I said, that underneath our, our one district, we can only have one principal building, but underneath the PD, you can have multiple buildings per lot. The setbacks are all going to be exceeded, except for the north, as I said, along 36th. It will be reduced from 30 to 20 feet. Parking, each twin home will have a two car attached garage with a driveway access from the main driveway off of 36th. And then, as I mentioned, there's going to be six surface parking spaces for overflow or visitor parking. Storm water management, as we said, as I said, there's going to be two stormwater ponds on the west side of the property. Impervious surface right now is very low, because it's only a single family home on a very large, very large lot. But it'll, after all is said and done, it will be 33%, which is much less than the maximum of 75% normally required under the R2 zoning. And then as always, we are, we have roach control measures will be in place during construction. Utilities, the twin homes will connect with existing water and sanitary sewer mains in 36th. Each new twin home will have a separate water meter with its own curb stop and shut off valve. And then we will, there are no, there are currently no easements on the property right now, but they will be dedicated with the lot consolidation plat. Landscaping, 12 new trees are to be planted, and all three of these are on our approved tree species list you saw earlier tonight. There's, the developer did, had a tree survey done. There's 93 trees on the property, 18 will be preserved. Our UDC does allow trees to be removed without replacing them if, under different scenarios. And I've listed them there on this slide. The ones that are applicable to this development are, trees can be removed if they're less than 12 inches in size. They are not on the approved tree species list, and they are obstacles to development. So just looking through the, the reasons that they're going to be removed, the two, the first two are really the predominant reason why trees are being removed. First, that they are less than 12 inches in size. And then secondly, there's quite a few trees on this property that are not on our true approved tree species list, including many ash, which we've, we know are not in good shape now. And then also there's quite a few maples on there, which are also not on our approved species list, so. So those are the main reasons why so many trees are being, are removed here. And then exterior lighting, one new light pole will be installed near the visitor parking. And then there will be new wall fixtures on, on the twin home units. So for, for the PD rezoning, there are two development standards. First, it has to comply with a two acre minimum, but there are exceptions to that rule, which this property fits. First, it's preserving a natural area, which is the west side of the, of this property is almost all floodplain. So that will be preserved as open space. And then the second finding is that it meets, it doesn't have to meet the minimum two acre area because it's in our redevelopment area. This, in our comprehensive plan for 2040, we've designated a few areas that we call redevelopment areas, and this is, this is located in area D, I think it is, if memory serves me. So, and then the other development standard here is that, is to provide a private recreational area. We've, it's been determined that this is not applicable to this development. The property is really too small to have a, a private recreational area. And then there are three city parks that are within one and a half mile that will provide recreation for this development. So the planning commission had a public hearing last week and they recommended approval of the rezoning with the conditions in the staff report. No one from the public provided comments. So tonight you're being asked to approve the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. The next steps would be to approve the lot consolidation, which I'll get to after these, on the next slides. And then on September 3rd, you would do second reading of the rezoning ordinance. Construction would begin in late 24 and be completed by mid 25. So that's my presentation for tonight. The builder is also here in the room to answer any questions you may have as well.
Alright. Any questions for Dan right now? Yeah, go ahead first.
Looking at this road, I was wondering, you know, if, if this is, this won't be any issues in terms of like visibility coming out on the 36th like that with trucks? I don't see a turnaround, so I was wondering if there's a, there's like a garbage truck going in there, are they going to be reversing now?
It's been designed with the, the city engineer has looked at this as well as the fire department, and they've looked at it for, the ability for fire trucks to get in and out, and they've, they're, they're okay with the, the configuration of the road. There is a, quite a distance between this and the, and the curb cut to the, to the west that enters that commercial strip area, so that's, we don't really believe that that will be a conflict point for this. It also, there's also right across the road from there, to the, for the liquor store, there is also a curb cut, but that's also pretty far away from this. So we don't see conflict points here with that, with, with, there's only eight units, and so it's not, it's not a ton of traffic, that's not, that's the other thing. This, these roads are, as you can see in the staff report, they're, they're designed to hold more traffic than there, than actually is occurring according to latest traffic counts. So the combination of all these
I guess my, my main concern was it, for garbage service, they will have to back out because there's no turnaround, correct? On to 36th.
There is no turnaround, correct?
Yeah, so they would be reversed, okay.
The developer, it sounds like he wants to address that.
Did you, yeah, feel free to speak up here.
Hi. Hi, thanks for having us this evening. Been a pleasure working with the, the staff here so far, so.
Good.
As far as your point, as far as the turnaround, so we, so we did add this parking, this visitor parking. That should also assist with the trucks, you know, if they, they pull into driveway, kind of back out and turn around.
Okay.
Also, if you look at the entrance off of 36th, there's some trees that we did end up, that are coming out, so it's also going to help with the visibility quite a bit. So the trees are going to plant there, they'll be lower, or there'll be more inset on the lot. So you'll, there'll be plenty of visibility to get in and, in and out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, thank you. John?
So with this project, there's no basements, so what about for like storm shelter, what, how's that?
You know, that, that question actually came up at the planning commission. I thought the builder answered that pretty eloquently, do you want to speak about that again?
Sure. I'll answer that question again. The planning commission had that as well. So we actually, in a while back, I don't, some of the council members came to our apartment complex. We own the Gates of New Hope, it's just around the corner on Medicine Lake Road over there. And that's a four story building, there's no basements, and that was built to code, and we're using the same standards here that, you know, whether it's with our architect or the engineer. So we're meeting all the state standards and all the safety standards for what's applicable. There isn't a storm shelter per se, but we're not, we don't have one also in the apartment complexes, four stories high without a basement, and we haven't seemed to have an issue there. The one thing we do as far as safety is concerned, we had an option whether to put a fire suppression system in each of the units. So we went above and beyond and made sure that each of the units actually had the fire suppression system.
I would also add, it's not uncommon nowadays for townhomes to have, not have basements. The, the 34th and Douglas Townhomes, the EDA recently sold, that, they, they do not have basements either.
Alright, go ahead John.
Just a follow-up, the reason why I bring it up is, we bought quite a few homes in the, in the Crystal Panhandle that didn't have basements. I mean, granted, those homes were not constructed to the best quality, but definitely, I mean, you know, a lot of the homes that went in as a result, I mean, one of the reasons why we put the homes in on those lots was because they had a basement, and because of the severe storms that we were experiencing in Crystal at that time. So that's the reason why, you know, bring it forward, so.
Go ahead Reese.
What's this street to the east, is that Colorado?
To the, to the north?
On the east side of it. Is that Brunswick, okay, okay. Is the sixth lot guest parking really necessary, since that's a pretty, right there, is that necessary?
Well, the reason we, we asked the, the developer to put that on there is because there's, there's no parking on 36th, of course, and, or on Douglas. And so anybody who's coming to this property would have to cross 36th and park over in the neighborhood over there to the, to the north. So we just felt like there should be some parking here for people, for guests and overflow, for that reason. Because it is kind of a, an area where there's not a lot of street parking that's real close by.
Well, and the guy reached trucks, need someplace to lean around, I guess, so. Anyway, thank you.
Alright, first.
This is more a question to, to the kind of the UDC and, and that private recreation piece. I know that we've brought, I've brought this up in the past. You know, it seems, has that ever successfully been implemented? I, I've heard it's not enough room a few times now.
Yeah.
I think that it seems like that's kind of, at least, your staff's opinion about most things. What would, what would there be enough room, you know?
Yeah. Well, I, I think that this has been, this was a provision that survived the great rewrite of 2017. And I think this was in there before. We, we're get, I don't, I don't know what the history is here of that. If that's, if that's been something that we've done a lot. It's, we haven't really had a lot of PD rezoning since I've been here, we've had probably a handful, and some of them are commercial in nature, so they didn't, they weren't affected by this, so. So yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm not really sure how to answer that. This property especially didn't seem very applicable, because they have that whole west side as being open space.
Right, and that's, that's kind of what I guess, where I was hoping the conversation would kind of go is, you know, it does seem like there's a lot of room, and it does seem like they're already, like this kind of is like, you know, a private open space already. So why wasn't that just counted as hitting it, that we could count it as a win?
I guess it's, it's, yeah, we could have done that, I think.
Oh, okay.
But it just wasn't considered a, it wasn't formal, it wasn't a formal open space, you know, maybe where they, like a park would be, I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead John.
To add on to that, we've kind of had that conversation internally too, and one of the upcoming rewrites of the UDC, not rewrites, sorry. Tweaks to the UDC, well, we're going to be talking about this, about maybe broadening, making clear that just private open space might be enough. That they don't necessarily have to have a playground, because maybe there's a park nearby. Like why make them build something that isn't needed or is duplicative or something we already provide nearby? It should be more tailored to the site, that's kind of the whole point of the PD rezoning, is to be site specific and look at the site and the conditions around it and what makes sense there. And yeah, so it's something we will be looking into as part of our next batch of UDC tweaks.
Excellent, yeah, that sounds great, yeah, because my first thought was, well, couldn't you just throw a couple picnic tables and then you have, boom, got it. So I'm glad to hear your staff is thinking about that, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Alright. Anyone else? Okay. Looking for a motion?
I guess. I make a motion amending the ordinance of the zoning map to rezone the property for the Creek Edge Townhomes LLC located at 6203 and 6213 36th Avenue North, from low density residential R1 to planned development R2 PD.
Alright, I'll second that. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries.
I just want to make one comment, you know, that, you know, you're having the north carry the, do the heavy lifting, so I, I expect you guys to jump on board, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did give you ample time, I think it was four seconds, maybe three. Alright. You want to continue Dan?
Sure, this is the second part of this development, is the lot consolidation. So you're being asked to adopt a resolution to consolidate the two lots owned by the, by Creek Edge Townhomes. So here on the screen is this table, is in your, is in your staff report that lists the, the size of each of these two parcels and what plat they're in. The combined total will be 1.76 acres after, after they're combined, and the address will be 6203 36th. Each, each unit will then also have an address off of 36th as well. So here is the final plat, showing the, the new easements, especially around the, the floodplain area on the west side of the lot. So there's three criteria for lot consolidations in our UDC. First, is it can, is the lot consolidation in conformance with the comp plan? The answer is yes, because as we just discussed, the, it'll be in, in conformance with the medium density residential designation. Does the lot consolidation meet the purpose intent of the UDC? The answer here is yes, because it's, the purpose is to create regulations, I'm sorry, to create regulations that avoid or minimize negative impacts to adjacent properties. This, we believe will have a complimentary impact on the, on the adjacent residential and commercial areas, fit in there very nicely. And then the last criteria is that, does a new combined lot conform to the dimensional requirements of the UDC? And the answer is definitely yes, it exceeds, far exceeds what we, we require. So tonight, we're just recommending that you consider a resolution approving the, the Creek Edge Baruch Edition plat.
Alright, thank you Dan, any questions on this one? Didn't think so, looking for a motion.
There we go.
I would like to enthusiastically adopt the following resolution approving the lot consolidation via the final plat of Creek Edge Branch Edition.
Alright. Reese?
I will second that.
Alright, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Could you step forward if you want to say something?
I spoke to Dan earlier, he asked me to mention, I think on the 5th, September 5th, if that works for everybody, like to do a groundbreaking ceremony. And I know CCX is going to be there, so if there's time in the morning that works best, I don't know, 9:30, so.
Generally speaking, but what works for your staff and
Yeah.
We'll make an effort to get there.
Okay.
We did, we love doing that.
9:30 on the 5th, if you guys want to come, and I'm sure Dan will send out an email or something.
Yeah, we'd love to be there.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
We'll make room.
Yep, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you looking for your slideshow? Okay, good. Because I can't find it.
Alright, next we will look at the West Metro Fire Rescue District Budget. We have our chief, Sarah Larson here to address the council, welcome Sarah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The budget that I'm looking for approval for tonight is the same budget that was presented to you back in June. The Board of Directors approved that budget at their July 10th meeting. It is a $3,716,599,000 contribution from both cities, and the contribution for Crystal is $1,803,511. And this includes capital, operations, leases for engines and tower, and pension fund and everything. So that is all inclusive and the contribution that we're asking from the City of Crystals. And if you have any questions or would like me to go over any, any details of the budget again, I am more than happy to. Otherwise, I know we've had a lot of discussions about it.
Yeah, we did some freewheeling without paper in front of us the other day. That was pretty impressive. Over at the, at Station, Station 1. Any questions for Sarah on this? Any question, yeah, go ahead Taj.
I have no questions but a comment, so I am supportive of the budget as it is. The thing that gave me pause, as I've shared, is the fact that our partners in New Hope were putting money aside to pay for, you know, to just kind of save for future potential things. As I have said and will say, I do not want to have to put money aside for future potential things. I would hope, and I believe, that West Metro is budgeting appropriately and requesting the appropriate dollars so that they, as an entity, can take care of, you know, their budget and finances. And so that was my only kind of main reservation of this budget and what we do as a, as a council. And even so, if we want to have a conversation of if, you know, do we need to put, need to be putting money aside, I think that's outside of approving this budget. That'd be, that'd be something we would do on our own, but again, I'm not in, in favor of that. So that's just the, the one comment I wanted to make.
Alright. Yeah, I, I think this is the first time we've gotten together as a council without having the fire board and New Hope in the same room. I thought we had a pretty healthy conversation, I thought we had some great direction. I thought we had a pretty healthy conversation, I thought we had some great direction. Uh, I really appreciate all of your inputs in, in what might be moving forward, uh, because I think that's, I think that's gonna be very positive for everybody involved in this joint venture. So, uh, thank you for that, um, looking forward to see that happen. Uh, any last chance for questions on the budget? Seeing none, looking for a motion? John?
Make a motion to approve the 2025 West Metro Fire Rescue District budget.
All right, looking for a second? Taj?
I'd like to second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Our Public Works Director, our City Engineer, Jesse's here to address the council, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, um, council members. Jesse's through, uh, Public Works Director, City Engineer, uh, to discuss the joint powers agreement with the Shingle Creek Watershed Management Commission. Uh, this was originally started as a result of a state and federal law in the early 1980s mandating all communities manage their watersheds. Uh, in 1984, uh, the Shingle Creek Watershed Management Commission, uh, formed with all the surrounding communities in that watershed, uh, and started a joint powers agreement that was originally set for a 20-year agreement, uh, that's been extended two different times for 10 years, so we've been on the same agreement for the last 40 years essentially, um, with some minor changes throughout. Um, the, the real benefit to the community is it allows this commission to manage projects across city boundaries, uh, utilizing funds from all the, uh, all the cities within the watershed districts, so you can really focus on projects that will help the watershed as a whole versus, uh, focusing city by city. Uh, they also set rules and regulations for developments, um, and treatment of that runoff, no different than the one that you just approved this evening that required the, uh, uh, the ponds and infiltration rates and, uh, cleaning of that stormwater before it discharges into , uh, the, the Shingle Creek and, and lakes. Some of the major projects that they've undertaken over the years include stabilizing a lot of the creek. Uh, now, the creek itself is not, uh, very much in, in the City of Crystal, uh, but they've also worked on large-scale projects, including the Becker Park project. They contributed funds to help reduce some of the flooding, uh, that resulted in all the underground takes, tanks under Becker Park. Um, they've worked with, uh, twin lakes, carp removal, uh, phosphorus loadings reductions, sediment loading reductions throughout, throughout the air watershed. I believe when, uh, in the early 2000s, when they did assessments over the 16 lakes, 13 were listed as impaired, and since, uh, through the work from all the communities, uh, and through the rule processes, five of those water bodies have been removed. So, um, the, uh, the commission does some good work, um, across all communities and including funds for air projects throughout. While there is a, a fair amount of language changes in, in the new joint powers agreement, there hasn't been a lot of actual changes to the substance, to the agreement itself. Uh, staff has reviewed it, um, through tack meetings, uh, with other staff, and we do not oppose any of the language that has been changed, uh, and we would recommend moving forward with the joint powers agreement. More than happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? Yeah, John?
So, um, looking at the status of the lakes meeting standards, um, so that's just on, on straight water quality, it doesn't have anything to do with the invasive species or anything like that? Is that correct?
Yeah, Ma- Mayor Adams, uh, councilman, councilmember Bushewski, you're correct. That's, uh, water quality only, not invasive, though they do do treatment of some of the lakes for some of the invasive species as well.
Yeah.
I know they're, uh, talking about some curly leaf pond weed, uh, treatments and stuff like that. So they do do some treatments associated with invasive, um, vegetation, uh, but yes, it, the standards are strictly water quality.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? Forrest?
How similar is this language to the, our other watershed management organization or member of Bassett Creek?
Um, um, Mayor Adams, councilmember, I bow, I, I, you know, they're very similar. Um, we'll be talking about the Bassett Creek, uh, JPA here in the, in the coming, uh, coming months as well, because that one's also up. Um, the one difference that we have, that we're kind of opposed to right now with the Bassett Creek, uh, we'll see what comes through, but, as they want, the ability to pay the commissioners that represent, but our city code right now does not, um, allow for payment of our, uh, the people, it's a voluntary basis only. Um, so we're submitting those comments here probably next week on that, uh, we'll see where that goes. But I mean, otherwise, the language, a lot of the rules are, I mean, there's some changes here and there, but for the most part, very similar.
Okay. And I was curious, because it, it seems like the Bassett Creek Watershed Management Organization has like, at least on the exterior, a more professional, like, robust, um, exterior-looking, uh, you know, like their website, their staff, it, I get the sense, it, it just feels like a very different organization than the Shingle Creek, um, one, and I was wondering if that came down to language, or maybe it's just, you know, their territory and the development that they oversee, so it's maybe funding-related.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the commissioners associated with it are, uh, different, um, yeah, I mean, but, but the, the, the substance about, behind it is, is very similar, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. Looking for a motion on this one? Go ahead, David.
Um, I authen, um, let's see, I, for a resol, resolution to authorize joint powers agreement between the City of Crystal and Shingle Creek Watershed Management Commission.
All right, thank you, looking for a second? Taj?
I'd like to second that.
All right. All, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Thanks, Jesse. Um, next, our Recreation Director, John Elhome, is here to address the council, and we are going to talk about the pool pumps.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, back again talking about the Aquatic Center. And I thought.
Page down.
Page down. You need to tell me that every time, no? That. Rut roll.
I got it.
Uh, thought I'd just start out saying the pool project is coming along nicely, uh, the picture on the left was taken yesterday, uh, picture on the right was a week or so ago. Um, concrete floor is in in the deep end, in that middle area where the lap lanes are. Tomorrow, I believe, there'll be pouring concrete in the shallow part of the pool, so things are progressing nicely. So, um, yeah, so we're, tonight, we, we're here for, uh, structure to protect the pool pumps. Uh, the pool pumps are actually, uh, in pits that are out on site. In the memo, I had a picture of the three different pits that the pumps are in. Uh, the bottom center pit, uh, picture is, uh, our current or previous picture of a pump that's down in a hole. Uh, on the far right is what we're doing, um, with the rectangular pump that's been out there, is we took most of it out, we left a part of it there, and then we're gonna expand it and make that a bigger pump and put all of the pumps into one, um, enclosure. Uh, what we heard from day one is we need to make sure we're doing something to protect the pumps that are in there, so, uh, the plan here and what we're presenting tonight is to put a roof over that structure. Uh, just a comparison of, uh, the budget we presented back in October versus today, uh, it's basically the same budget. Uh, we did add a Hennepin County Youth Activities Grant to that, and then we did have a separate project, uh, the front counter at the community center where you check in, um, that counter's not ADA accessible, there's a variety of things that need improvement there. We're doing very similar things at the pool building, so we just combined that, so when we get quotes, that we'll just have a contractor do both at the same time. Um, so basically the same budget as we've looked at before. And then most of this has been, we've been here for, so design documents, construction contracts for the pool, uh, construction management, amenities, and then the roof structure here is a $61,228, um, to get that structure over the pump pits. Um, so the recommendation tonight is, and I should point out, uh, is to enter into agreement with Weber Recreational Design to purchase and install a roof structure over the Aquatic Center pump and valve pit in the amount of $61,228. I should point out that in the memo, I actually had dimensions of the roof, we're still adjusting that slightly, and the reason for that is if you look at this picture where the slide is in yellow, in the pump pit, we're putting a sidewalk in there to get to the stairs to go up the slides. It's a little bit narrower than we'd like it, so we're shrinking the size of the pit a little bit so we can widen that sidewalk. So the shelter will actually only be probably 32 feet long instead of 34 feet long. Um, so the recommendation is to approve a resolution, that being the only change is, uh, eliminating the size of the structure. The cost will likely be a little bit less too, but I don't have that number tonight. And with that, are there any questions?
All right, questions for John? Go ahead, John.
So why, why, um, didn't this go out for bid, I guess, in terms of, um, you know, instead of, you know, just having one, um, cost involved for building the, the roof, I guess?
Yeah, the pool contractors don't do a lot of structures, so it would've been a separate part of that. We hired a construction, a concrete guy, the, uh, demolition people. So whether it was worth the bid or separately, I think we're getting a better price this way.
Yeah, how so?
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not clear on the, which part would go, are you asking about going out to bid on?
Um, so, I mean, so the $61,228, that's for the.
Roof.
That's for the, the.
Just the roof.
The roof structure, yeah.
And the installation.
The, the pit, all the mechanicals, that's all part of the pool.
Yeah, that's all part of the pool, but I'm asking about the roof. Why, why didn't that go out for bid?
We got multiple quotes on.
You did get one, you, okay.
Yeah, this is the one that we, the best deal.
This is the best, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I didn't see that in this presentation, I just got, you know, I got this number here, so.
Sorry.
Right, okay.
Yeah, a lot of times with amenities, we do it like with benches and different shade and things, we do that separately because we can generally get a better price than just having the contractor, we'll usually mark it up, you know, if you hire a general contractor to buy those things for you.
Yeah. So my big question was, you, you basically went and solicited, uh, multiple quotes on this project?
Right.
And you took the best quote?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, very good, that's what I want to hear. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on this one? Looking for a motion?
You ask the questions, you make the motion, right? So. I make a motion to approve the purchases and installation of a roof structure over the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center pump valve pit.
All right, looking for a second? Therese?
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Thanks, John.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we're low on, uh, announcements, but here we go anyway. Uh, city offices will be closed Monday, September 2nd, and that's in observation of Labor Day holiday. The next council meeting is Tuesday, September 3rd at 7:00 PM here at the council chambers at City Hall, and also via Zoom. The city and, city council meetings and work sessions are open to the public. Current and previous meetings are available for viewing and listening on our website at crystalmn.gov.[1761.54]